Stand for the pledge, please. My pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need you to please silence your electronic devices, that would be appreciated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the billboard of trustees meeting for January 21st, 2020. Happy New Year. Call the meeting in order. Roll call, Ms. Winston.
President.
Mr. Carville.
Here.
Mr. Duchesne.
Here.
Mr. Labierre.
Here.
I am here. Start with the presentation for our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Kaya.
Good evening and thank you, welcome everybody. It's always a pleasure to introduce you to the Department of Public Works through this medium. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our accomplishments last year, some of the projects we've done, and of course, I'll hit upon the general budget for the DPW as well. So, the Department of Public Works consists of six main sub-departments within the department itself. DPW is the largest department with 39 employees, six of which are management, the remainder are the union members, CSCA. Of course, we do our plumbing of streets and collection of refuges and recycle. Under my supervision, we have Nikki Xavier, who is in charge of the water and wastewater treatment plants. We have Paul Russell, who's our street foreman, who receives the roadwork, all the sanitary vehicle repair and refuse collection. Stephen Daly, who is our water department foreman, who is in charge of the water transmission and distribution system, not only in the village but also in the township. Scott Castagnan, village engineer, who's responsible for project design and information. And Nikki Davian, who is our senior account clerk, in charge of bill processing, payroll orders, all the office work. And then we also have the 33 dedicated CSCA members. Last year, we had a tremendous amount of turnover for a small department such as ours. We lost seven experienced CSCA members through retirement. Fortunately, this board allowed me to replace each of the members, which we needed to train. Some of the accomplishments that you see in the background there, of course, the DPW involves a lot of work and a lot of moving parts. We have that. I mentioned some of the street paving that we've done, maintenance and repair of roads, and line share, what we do in the spring, summer, and fall months. Along with that, we maintain the infrastructure, the storm, the sewer pipe, catch basins, manholes. They fill the gaps when we're out in the course of the day. We also collect refuges, brush and grass, maintain our parks, plow or snail, and respond to learn season requests put out by the board. In March of 2007, we purchased a used paving machine. The purchase of the machine has given us many liberties, able to schedule more efficiently, able to use the machine to patch if needed. What you see in the background there, we have been able to, we assisted DOT, if you guys recall over the summer, Department of Transportation came through when they repaved entire Main Street from the bridge all the way to the highway. And in doing that, it's just not as simple as just paving the road, putting a layer of black asphalt down there. We had to raise a number of manholes and catch basins in the whole system, and they gave us, they told us about it in May, and gave us the month of June to get that accomplished, which we did. But it put us behind our schedule. We also ended up rebuilding the municipal parking lot behind the town hall, and we're going to pave around the arena this spring, 2020. This was all given to us basically by the grant that we got from Senator Joe Griffo, which is a $300,000 grant. $225,000 was spent in the back, the other $75,000 will be spent over there at the arena. Our street paving is on schedule. We placed about 2,500 tons of asphalt, which constitutes about 1.2 miles, based on the 28-foot wide roadway. We upgraded our heating system at the DPW, and it's working perfectly now. We cleared and grew up behind DPW four and a half acres of wooded property to be the housing for our new solid storage shed and some cold storage area. So when we moved the old DPW from 536 South Main Street to there, we have a home. In the background, the lower right-hand corner, you will see that there's stone. We armored the bank near the wastewater treatment plant that was being eroded through the years. It was getting very close to infrastructure, damaging some of the infrastructure that was there. So we put out a contract to armor that slope. Upper left-hand corner, you'll see that we had a pile of brush at the old DPW. We put out, actually, our friend and neighbor, Seaway Timber Harvesting, came in and chipped our brush pile at will. And so, we want to thank them for their efforts in helping us out. They're good neighbors. This set of slides here, in the top, the top two slides, you'll see that we have done some work on Liberty Avenue that's being paved by DPW forces, that's on the left. On the right, you'll see the finished product of the workmanship that we have done on Liberty Avenue. On the bottom left, we have some great relationships with other municipalities to provide services for us. They haul our materials for us. It doesn't really cost us any capital outlay. However, whenever they, whenever we mill a street, for instance, the millings that we have, I put it in a pile. And that pile, we can use it here in the Village of Messina, but what I do is I barter, and I bartered with other municipalities, because they can use it for their shoulders. So, for every load of asphalt they bring in, they take the load of millings back with them. So no cash outlay from the Village of Messina to these other municipalities. We have a great relationship with not only Stockholm, but with Northport, with Messina as well, the Town of Messina. Everything works out well. The bottom right-hand side, you'll notice that's East Orbus Street, from Main to Glen Street, after we had a problem with our water line on that segment of road where we had three breaks in two weeks. So we felt that a need to replace that water line, and doing so, and then we ended up having to replace the asphalt, pave that asphalt there. Here's some more road accomplishments. What you'll see up in the upper left-hand corner, that's Chase Street, but that's just the shim coat. And what the shim coat does, it takes out all the bumps and the unlevelness, if you will. And then, once you put the shim coat down, you can also put a true level of concrete down for your curbs. Because if you didn't have that, your curbs are going to follow the same profile as the road. So if the road itself dips, your curb is going to dip. With this true and level course here, you don't have that. You have a straight linear curb, and it looks attractive. Now, right after this is done with the shim coat and the curbs are placed, we come back in with another inch and a half of top coat, which seals everything back in. Again, like I had mentioned, we have some unanticipated projects that we ended up doing, the municipal parking lot at the back here, Main Street repaved with New York State DOT, where we had to raise 27 manholes, and also the East Orbus Street project. Bailey Road was another, DPW replaced a portion of water line on Bailey Road. That's from 37 to Williams, because we had multiple pass failures there. And Bailey Road is the road on your left hand, lower left-hand side. The last project we have to do this coming spring will be Baldwin Avenue, the complete from Maple Street to the town line road. So, what you see here, the top two photos, are what's inside the belly of the intake. The intake, in general, the intake is owned by the power authority. That's the structure itself. It's owned by the power authority. All the piping and the generators and the pumps and whatnot, the components inside the intake is owned by Alcoa. In 2015, Alcoa inspecting, was inspecting their pipes and their systems there, and they put a blind flange on the outside of the wall of the intake. And so, when they were inspecting their pipe, they also inspected ours. So our pipe, if you look on the right-hand, top right-hand photo, the pipe that's in red or brownish color, that's, that, those pipes are what feed the water plant at the Village of Messina. So, they also inspected, on the left-hand side, when they were doing theirs in 2015, and they inspected ours, and they said, "You'd better give it some attention." So what we ended up doing at that point is, we furnished them with the two valves that you see coming off their 48-inch lines. And that was about $6,700 worth of purchase of materials right there for a product. And they installed that for us. So they were good neighbors to us. Alls we did is just furnish them with the valves, and they were able to install that for us at no charge to the Village of Messina. So in, when we ended up replacing that line that you see, there is a section of pipe that you will see there. Let me try and point it out for you. It's this piece right here. What it is, is a 22.5-degree elbow. And so, that whole line is cement lined, back when they put it in there. It's cement lined. The only thing holding that water in, coming from the upstream side of the intake, the only thing holding that water in there was the cement lining. The outside of that pipe, of that fitting, was gone completely. So it's a good thing that we took the measures that we did to replace that section. In order for us to do that, I have to retract way back to 2006, where we put in the emergency bypass. In that bypass, it's a new 12-inch feed that goes from the water, it goes from the 48-inch line near Alcoa's entrance on the north side, North Main Street, to the water plant. Without that, this would have been, had we shut the water off, it would have been without water at the entire village. So, it was the planning part of it, getting that replaced, putting those two valves in, putting the emergency bypass feed in. We're pretty much set now for the next 80 years with that system there. The lower photos that you'll see is a pipe bursting operation, where it involves HDPE pipe, which is a thick plastic pipe. It's a monolithic piece, which means it's just one piece with no penetrations and no joints, no penetrations at all. We have a head expander, which is shown in the middle photo, and then the hydraulic burster, which is the machine that pulls the pipe through. Previous to this year, we ended up bursting seven projects across State Highway 37 with this system right here. So, so what we have, is we have a host pipe, and this plastic pipe is, sits inside the host pipe. We also have done, this year, we did the crossing near Pizza Hut, which crosses the highway, and we did the two railroad crossings down on South Main Street. We have one more project to do on East Orbus Street at Bailey Road, and then, that's with the pipe bursting project. And then there's two river crossings that I would like to have accomplished at some point, but that will require directional drills. They use the same product, but the different process. So when we were doing our upgrade in 2018 with the footbridge, and we were doing our work with the approaches on each side, so during that program, we ended up having to re-point the piers that you see in the river, re-point the approaches, the abutments, if you will. And when we were doing that, we noticed that first section of pipe, that's a sewer pipe that goes from one manhole all the way across the footbridge on the upstream side of that footbridge. And so, it's 570 feet long, 12-inch cast iron. When we were doing that, when we were re-pointing the abutment on the north side, we noticed that that pipe closest to the abutment was split on the bottom, and it was dripping on the banks of the river. So we did a temporary patch, and then shortly after that, I developed a program where we were going to slip line that whole line. So it's 570 feet. And now what we have is a monolithic piece of this composite right here, if you will. And what it is basically is, you take a sock, you invert it, you shoot it in this thing with air, and then you put steam to it, and it crystallizes. So it's almost like fiberglass right now. And it's one piece, goes from one end to the other. Now we also have, so it's 570 feet of 12-inch line, and now we have a host pipe, being that cast iron pipe, to add additional strength for support.
What's the lifespan of that?
That'll be there for 70 years, 60, 70 years, it's there for a while. And finally, I'd like to, this proposed budget is offered and proposes an overall decrease in 0.22% from last year's proposed budget. As we're all aware, the DPW is a service-oriented department, which relies on staffing power. Our service and work is relative to the staff we have. Any modification of staffing level, of course, will have a direct impact on services rendered. We try and maintain a moderate fleet of equipment to keep breakdowns and maintenance costs at an equal. Any questions?
Questions for the secretary?
Just to clarify for those, I mean, this is your proposed budget that you submitted to the mayor?
That's correct. It's comparing to last year's proposed budget that I submitted. Yeah.
So I think, you know, people take for granted, they don't really know the operations of Public Works and everything they do from infrastructure to building grounds and water, sewer, refuges, you know, maintaining roads, all of our equipment, vapor repairs, you name it, they do it. So we appreciate the leadership from you and the management team, and all the work that the staff does too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, reports of officers and committees. The Treasurers report. Mr. Felton.
Hello, everyone. You should have all the reports for your budget report, balance sheet, and projections in your bins in John Eak's office. The summary is there, showing where we are current date through December. Number two, the, sorry, number three, the mortgage tax we received from St. Lawrence County this month was in the amount of $39,644, which is a very sizable increase of almost $14,830, which we don't normally see, but it's something you can predict either. So, whether it's a trend, we'll, I will tell. But this is the first one that I've seen of that kind of increase. We are currently in the process of completing the quarterly and calendar year, year-end reporting. When I did this last week, since then, we have completed all the W-2s. They're out. The 1099s are also out in the mail. So that was both completed for the year. December 5th, we received $25,000 for the Complete Streets grant reimbursement to complete the sidewalks for the ADA compliance that DPW worked on. So that is fully completed and paid for now. Last thing that I did not include in here is, the financial statements are pretty much done with the auditors. They're just waiting for the attorneys to, Attorney Matt McCrystal to respond, then we can finalize, and he's going to be here for next month to present it, so. Again, we had to do the single audit this year, so a little more work to it, but we're still on task and on topic to have it done in time, so. That should be wrapped up here, hopefully in the next week, to have it all completed. I do have an action item, to adopt the annual correcting and refunding of erroneous taxes resolution.
We'll take that on later on in the agenda.
Which is on later in the agenda?
Yeah, it's listed as an item, so. Questions for Mr. Felton? I do have one, I probably should know this more than that. Number three, mortgage tax. So is there a different formula, or is that mortgage tax collected just here in the village?
That is for the village, but it's collected by New York State. Counties, the county doesn't have any plan. It's what the amount that goes with the state that is reported as the village.
The village, I see.
And then they distribute it out. Goes to, well, the county is the one that collects it initially, and then there's a certain percentage that we get based on that. But I don't think it's the county that decides, I think it's the state formula.
Any questions for Mr. Felton? Thank you. Code enforcement, Mr. Carville, Mr. Labierre. Economic Development Committee, Ms. Winston, Mr. Labierre.
Attended the DDC meeting. It was their annual meeting. They appointed their slate of officers and are looking at setting their 2020 goals, so I'll pay the price once they are finalized.
Fire Committee, Mr. Carville, Mr. Labierre. Personnel Committee, Ms. Winston, Mr. Duchesne. Police Committee, Mr. Carville, Mr. Dur Duchesne.
Yes, I attended the PAL grant opening two days back. The chief was there, had a conversation with the chief. It's a very well-used facility. I was really amazed at the number of, I'll say, kids that were there, and I liked the way that the police are now interacting with the youth. It just made it a good mix for that. At that time, I discussed what's going on with the chief, and nothing to report at this time.
Recreation Commission, Mr. Carville.
Very busy, arena this time of the year, figure skating, hockey, and they finished putting the blue lighting in the arena. Been ongoing for quite a while, it takes quite a effort to go in there and see that. And it's great to see the, so much going on down there. And the activity, and you had the breakdown between the different years. We're heading to the sales of goodies there at the thing, and you want to thank all the people, businesses and stuff that put the skating on during the holidays. Very active. That's my report.
Thank you. Street Committee, Ms. Winston, Mr. Labierre. Water and Sewer Committee, Ms. Winston, Mr. Labierre.
After all of the recent snowfall, the DPW's been busy plowing, and they're now scheduling the removal of snow in downtown areas migrating to East Orbus, Willow, and Liberty. And they also had a water leak today in Irwin, but they've already made repairs on that.
Mr. Public Comment period. Always ask you to please stand, cover the podium, state your name for the record, initial public comment period. Saying none, moving on, old business, spring cleanup procedure. We talked about this several times. At the last meeting, we talked about the parameters at which we were, we were going to come up with for this coming spring cleanup. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kaya.
So, I put the committee together at the DPW, that consisting of the two foremen and also the DPW clerk. We sat and we tried to figure it out, the best approach to the changes that we want to address. We feel that with these changes to the existing program, will probably address 95% to 98% of the issues that are outstanding that we face this past year. So, if you want, I can go down through them.
Sure.
For the general public. So, we would still like to designate the two full weeks, Monday through Saturday, for the program. The last week of April, first week of May, somewhere in that area. However, what we want to do is eliminate north side, south side. The only reason why we did that last year was a request by St. Lawrence County, solid waste out there. They didn't want to get inundated at any one time with that. So, I'm hoping that that will not, that not happen. We want to allow also, in addition to those two weeks, we want to allow every Saturday throughout the month of May, for people that are struggling, coming in from vacations from the south, they have a month of May, only on Saturdays, to bring their product out there for that. And I think I'd have to request St. Lawrence County to stay open until the 3 o'clock hour, as opposed to noon, because right now, they open from 8 to noon on Saturdays. So I'll request that they open until 3. We would also like to mail vouchers to our residents who have the water turned on. Those people that have water on, we'll mail them the vouchers. One sheet will have two vouchers on it, so it allows them two trips to the transfer station. They need to bring the vouchers, I'm sorry. When people come in from, out of town, from off of vacation, and their water's shut off, as soon as we turn the water on, we will give them a voucher during the month of May. When they come in, we'll give them a voucher that, again, has two of the vouchers on there, and that way, they have their, as soon as we turn the water back on, they're now have their vouchers to take their product up north or up to the transfer station. And again, what we'll do is, we'll place a minimum of two staff personnels on site to direct and to assist. If we need more, may probably put more up there to assist as well. And then, that's pretty much it. And then, people can refer to our Facebook page. Nikki, she's outstanding in how she keeps, keeps records on that thing, and keeps the general public notified of everything that we do, from, you know, the holidays that we observe, which is not Martin Luther King Day, she put it on there that we don't observe that garbage gear picked up. But everything that we do is on our Facebook page, and the goods that are allowed, and the free goods, the free disposal of goods, such as white goods and clothing, electronics, that can be brought up there at any time and disposed of. Those are the changes that we have proposed.
Questions, trustees?
So I think, when we adopted the changes a year ago, we knew that, you know, we'd have to see how it goes and adjust. These adjustments ease, like you said, 99% of the concerns that I heard, or more than doubling the time available, because you're opening the full two-week period to both sides. So instead of having one week assigned, you have the full two-week, and you have additional Saturdays, so that's great. Two vouchers instead of one allows more to be brought out, so that'll be the exact concern. We have a process for those who may not get it in the mail. I like the changes. I really like the changes. So thank you for working on that.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you. We have proposed resolution, exemptable to Messina reorganization study as presented by the Center for Governmental Research. As you know, we adopted this by vote last month, but we were supposed to do it by resolution, so I have to call you individually, you have the resolution in front of you. I don't entertain motion. Someone? Mr. Labierre?
Second.
Second. By Mr. Carville. Discussion? It's a resolution, call individually. Ms. Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. Duchesne?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. I will tell you, as you know, one of the recommendations in the study was to look at consolidating Village and Town Court. I've had issued rulings on that, so we'll talk about that later on at the bottom of this, so. But we're hoping to really seriously look at all of the recommendations that are in there and give it full consideration. Maybe some of that will be part of the budget, I'm not sure everybody got on the numbers, but I just wanted you to know that we're looking at those and we're talking with staff on them as we go. C, general code of the Village of Messina, Chapter 270, taxi cabs and vehicles, floor fire. So as you know, Section 270, 16B in the Village Code under 270, established a limit of 10 cabs village-wide. We currently, generally speaking, have no coverage at night right now. Both cab companies are not typically operating at night. There is some sporadic operation, I understand. So we've had a number of people calling the office. The chief and I have been talking about it. We have reached out, both owners of the cab companies are here. We have reached out, both owners of the cab companies are here tonight. So we were trying to get agents in conversation to see what the solutions would be to provide additional coverage when that happens. And I will say that we understand that vehicle for hires is changing drastically throughout the state, obviously with, we have public transportation coming with St. Lawrence County in March, buses. Vehicles for hire left Uber are slowly creeping into the area. It's a tough business to make money in, a number of businesses come in here and take the medical transports and the other things away from the cab companies. So it's challenging and it's, we're not pointing fingers, I'm not pointing fingers. What my hope is that we can find a solution to ensure that we have public transportation or taxi cabs available during those off-hours, particularly at night, maybe somebody needs to get home from work or from somewhere else. So chief, I'd open up to you if you have anything else.
Yeah, I know you pretty much stated it's just, how can we make this work for our community, you know, a rising cost poverty area? But, you know, maybe it's meeting individually with the cab companies also to come up with, what can they do to assist, what do they need? So I think that's one of the biggest things, is how do we make this work for everybody? And it's challenging, as the mayor said, so looking forward to hopefully meeting with some of the taxi cab owners and working from there.
Open it up to you, I'm Mr. Sacra, Mr. Strain.
Just that, I mean, at the cost, you cannot afford to stay open. You've got, like you say, Uber and Lyft. And now, I mean, we've had several of ours come to us and say, they're not even using the Uber and Lyft. The people that work for Uber and Lyft are going in, giving their cell phone numbers, so they're not even going through the Uber and Lyft app and they're doing calls. There's no way that you can tell Uber and Lyft isn't in town. They don't have no marketing on more for their cars. When you call Uber or Lyft, they just tell you, this is the car that's going to pick you up and this is the flight number, go up and check it. Could be anybody. And I mean, so it makes it very hard when you have this. I mean, as I'm watching Facebook media, there's several people out there saying lately that they're doing calls in town for five bucks without a taxi license. A lot of places are doing it now and I mean, and stuff, so it's just at the point where the other cost, 11 went up, the income went up for people with payroll and stuff. It's so hard to do it on a $4.50 and $35.00 ride and stuff in the village and stuff. I mean, it's got to the point where once you, the car insurance went up crazy for the taxis, workers' comp went up, took a jump up. I mean, it's almost impossible to try to compete with all these other things at that kind of a price. I mean, you've got to pay a dispatcher, costs $140 a night to have a dispatcher sit there. If you do 50 calls at five bucks, what is there left? I mean, that's the problem with it. And I know the public in the village needs transportation at night and stuff. And I mean, and we love to be in there, we've been there several times since I was born today. But I mean, after a while, you've got to say, well, enough's enough. We can't do it during the night when there's nothing there to date.
Thank you. Mr. Sacra.
Yeah, several years ago, I brought this to the attention of a few of you. I foresaw this coming, there was no doubt that this was coming, I saw it coming several years ago. And we eventually stopped running at night. I can't pay and I can't subsidize, other parts of my business can't subsidize transportation with the public. There comes a point where it's not there. And the outside companies coming in, grabbing the cherries and leaving the pits for us. That's what happened. You know, there's no way around it. You know, and I know the board's hands are tied, I mean, you guys can't stop Uber from coming in, you guys can't stop the outside, Medicaid ones coming in, grabbing the good ones. I understand that. But we needed that pie to have a complete 24-hour operation. Everybody started coming in and picking at it. There was nothing left. They wanted us to do the rest. And my pocket's only so deep. So that's why we stopped running at night. Some things have changed since then. That's a couple of years ago. We are developing a plan so that we can work longer hours. Technology's going to be part of it. We're pretty close to having implementation of that. And I'm not ready to disclose what it is yet. I know the board members, you guys, and the chief is aware of where I'm going with this. I hope it works. Even still, it still doesn't give us 24-hour coverage, but it gets us pretty darn close. And if the money is there, I'm willing to expand it into the 24-hour operation. But I've got a plan in place now. I want you guys to look at it. I'm working on more of the technology end on my side. We're testing it as we speak. And we'll see where the next couple of weeks goes. But we do have plans to increase it. At this point, we don't have plans for 24 hours, but we're pretty darn close. And we're not opposed to going to 24 hours if it can pay for itself. And for that, we're going to need your help. We're going to need your help with rates. And we'll go from there. I'm well aware of the, well aware of the climate that's out there. And, you know, there comes enough, but there's not enough. You know, if you don't feed a horse enough, sooner or later, the horse gets sick and dies. Yeah, I mean, my pockets are always so deep. I lost tens of thousands, probably, I probably lost, yeah, tens of thousands of dollars. And I probably said, enough, you know, I got to keep baloney in my fridge too. But I do have a plan and I am working on it. And I think we can make big progress here in the next few weeks. And anybody wants to sit down? I'm more willing to sit down with anyone if you want.
Well, the same way, we're wanting to go back 24 hours, but things has got to change. I mean, if you're doing it, we're going to feel the things has got to change.
Thank you.
It's great to hear technology being brought up. No doubt it's a tough industry, but every industry that faces challenges from new products, if you would, has to find ways to adapt, to survive. You can't just constantly beat price increases. That being said, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, this board stated they were willing to look at and listen to proposals, specific proposals. Today, I haven't received any, citing a proposed rate increase for what period, what would it do. I would throw that suggestion back out there. If there is something that is still fair to the consumer, but helps assist these businesses make nighttime more profitable where they can be open, write that up. It doesn't have to be fancy, but get us something specific so we can evaluate it as a board. We had that, you know, it was a good spirited discussion a while back. I didn't see anything afterwards. So this board is never just going to pull something out of the air and decide arbitrarily to make a change to a code. It's got to be based in sound reasoning. And that sound reasoning is going to come from the experts. And the experts in this part are in part you guys. So I would just encourage that that offer is still there for us to consider something. It just needs to be specific and presented to us.
My house trustees. Thank you, everyone. Moving to new business, proposed resolution correcting and refunding erroneous taxes. This is an annual resolution. So under the real property law, we have a local option for erroneous levy taxes in the amount of 2500 or less to be corrected or refunded upon application by the county director of real property tax services and the approval of the local list treasurers. So this allows that to happen. It also requires that you would file a monthly report with us when corrections are made. Second, Mr. LeBeere, was it, Mr. Carville? Seconded by Mr. Carville. Discussion. It's a resolution, call individually, Ms. Winston.
Aye.
Mr. Carville.
Aye.
Mr. Deshaies.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeere.
Aye.
Resolution carries. We have an appointment of Ken McGowan, Planning Board Director. Planning Board, I'm sorry. Mr. LeBeere.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Deshaies. Discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Discussion amending Chapter 230 Sewers of the General Code of the Village of Musina. Mr. Fayad.
Yes, several years ago, we were approached by a company that's been out of our area. They're in the Hilton area and they have, they requested for us to take their effluent, if you will, their discharge. So at that point, we were kind of frowned upon it because it was a high BOD content and our really, our program really didn't allow for it. But we did it on a trial basis back then and it hurt our plan a little bit. Just required a little bit more of an effort at our plant, personnel at our plant. So they came back to us this year and requested that we accept their septic or accept their effluent, if you will, at our wastewater treatment plant. The product that they put out is tied in BOD, which is a dissolved oxygen, biological dissolved oxygen. What that does is it kills our plant. Our plant is an activated sludge plant, which is, to break it down in terms, it's a lot of bugs in there to eat the sludge and goes away. But whenever you introduce a high BOD content, it kind of kills the bugs. So you have to aerate a lot more. It can be done, so we didn't feel that the current ordinance of 10 cents a gallon was representative enough for us to do that. So what I'd like to do is introduce a new wording in there that allows me, whenever there is a, there is an outside source or a third party that wants to come in with a different type of product than our normal sewer or waste, to negotiate a rate with them, much like what we do in the refuse ordinance that allows a little bit of leeway for the superintendent to negotiate rates with commercial establishments, if you will. This is no different. And so the rates that we would develop and charge would be enough to capture what we are expending at the water, I'm sorry, the wastewater treatment plant, that being the soft costs with the personnel as well as any added electricity or utility costs that impacts the Village of Musina. That's all that wording basically says.
I spoke to the superintendent and the mayor beforehand on this. I 100% support the intent behind it. I'm going to suggest we schedule a public hearing, but I do want to alert you guys that we're going to have, or I've asked them to have attorney McCarron just verify that the language does what the intent we're discussing tonight is. So there might be a minor tweak between that, but it will be official when it goes up for the public hearing notice. But the intent would be absolutely the same. It just doesn't make sense for us to accept and charge for this certain product at a rate that doesn't negate the expense. I mean, we're not in business to lose money. We're in business to provide service and we need to make sure that we're not harming the village. So that's my thoughts. I'll wait for the end of discussion, but I'm going to propose a public hearing.
So that's a motion to establish a public hearing on February 18, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. to amend Chapter 230 Sewers.
Exactly the words ours are going to say. Perfect.
Seconded by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So Mr. Fayad, you're going to contact the village attorney formally?
I will.
Okay, thank you. De, Discussion, St. Lawrence County Sales Tax Distribution. Deputy Mayor LeBeere and I met with town supervisors O'Shaughnessy, Councilman Sam Carbone, county legislator Tony Arkweck, who has a piece of the Village of Musina in his district, and Nicole Terminelli, who has her entire district within the village. She represents three districts. Legislator Rea Kern was invited, was going to be here and canceled that day, couldn't come, to talk about the sales tax distribution issue. So there are a number of proposals going on and negotiations. I'm not going to get into the specifics of it all yet because it's really negotiations going on in County and the city of Ibbinsburg right now, but the municipalities have been brought into it. So many of the communities in the county have passed resolutions asking the county not to make changes to the current formula. As you know, this is negotiated every 10 years, county required to, by law, it was required to pass a resolution on this. A piece of what I brought up into discussion is that no change would be okay, but I'd actually like to see a change that favored a heavier emphasis on population. So for example, the town of Colton is number one, I'm sorry, let me back up. So as you know, the formula for sales tax is based on 50%, your assessed value of your property and 50% on population. So if you were to take the town of Colton, they're number one in assessed value property in the county, they're 25th in population. So it lands them ninth on overall distribution of sales tax. And it's hard, and I acknowledge it's difficult, we, the Village of Musina is the number one sales tax recipient in the county. So it's hard to make a spirited argument, but on the same token, when you consider what's probably likely the three biggest things, car dealers, hotels and restaurants that create sales tax, you would have to assume that population tends to generate more than assessed values. So I've asked them to at least have some discussion on that. And certainly, I leave it to the trustees, if you are interested in looking at the resolution that's being passed around, other municipalities to support no change, I would leave that to you. I currently want them to look at this a little bit deeper than just to the law.
Yeah, trustees, I would encourage you to either attend a county meeting where they discuss it or to speak directly to any of our county legislatures to get the full information going into the meeting. I was probably leaning towards supporting a resolution afterwards. I don't appreciate the tough position that they're in. There's no easy answer, but I don't think I'm at the point where I would support a resolution suggesting no change, simply for the fact, I think, it has to be looked at like the mayor said. We have to make sure that whatever system is being used, whatever formula is being used is fair compared to all of those involved. You never want to see any one fellow municipality take a hit. I think they're being mindful of that and I'm optimistic that any negative changes for any one municipality will be alleviated through some other mechanisms. But like the mayor said, this is a negotiation between them and the city. I'd like to see it continue to play out and be looked at from a variety of perspectives and see where it goes from there.
And sales tax. Okay, thank you. E, we have a retirement, Jack DiAgostino, water and wastewater plant operator. Mr. LeBeere. Seconded by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We appreciate his service. F, Authorization of Campus for Wastewater Plant Operator. Mr. LeBeere, seconded by Mr. Deshaies. Discussion.
Do we have a current list or will there have to be another?
I'll have to contact St. Lawrence County for that current list, but I believe so.
Okay, good. Further discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have another retirement, Timothy Kern, Senior Motor Equipment Mechanic, Foreman. Mr. Carville, seconded by Mr. Deshaies. Discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Appreciate his service. Authorization of Campus for Senior Motor Mechanic, Foreman, and any subsequent vacancies caused. So this would be an internal posting, as I understand it.
Correct.
See if someone else is interested first and then the dominoes will fall. Mr. Carville, seconded by Mr. LeBeere. Discussion. All is in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Discussion, Village Justice Court. As I reiterated earlier, the local reorganization study, one of the main recommendations out of that study were to look at merging the town and village courts. We currently operate the court jointly, so they operate the systems together. The reality is, there is a court clerk for the town, there is a court clerk for the village. They really do overlap, they cover one each other's office. You can call either one of them and get an answer to your question. You don't have to talk to the village or the person, vice versa. However... However, um, New York State Conference of Mayors has issued a number of opinions and stuff on, uh, on emerging dissolution, et cetera, courts. When it's, when it's multiple towns and villages, it's not permissible in New York State. So we run into again the complication of a portion of the town of Lewisville being in the village of Messina. So really the only option we have would be to look at dissolution of the village court. So I provided you an email, I think today, maybe previously as well, that just looked at the last two years of, uh, revenue and, um, expenses for, uh, Justice, Village Justice Court. So in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, uh, revenue was, uh, total cost was one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. Uh, revenue was fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. So at a net cost of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. And two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and we can provide the, the press with these, so you have these accurately. Total cost was a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty, revenue of forty-one, four seven seven, or a net cost of seventy-two, eight seven three. So I've been having some discussions with the treasurer. NICO has a form to fill out, but it's really a detailed form on certain expenses of, I'm not sure I see the value of getting into it because it really simple is, this is what we're, we're paying out, this is what we're bringing in. It shows, uh, if, uh, we're going to look at that form a little closer to see if there's some value in looking at that. Um, so, um, state law to eliminate justice court, uh, you can only do it at the end of a justice's term. So in other words, we couldn't pass a resolution tonight and shut the court down tomorrow. Uh, so we would be looking at three years out, the current term. Of course, we have a, a appointed replacement for Judge Surgeson, who ran last year successfully, two years ago, I should say, two thousand eighteen. So his term would not expire until twenty-twenty. It's currently filled with an appointment. The current judge would have to, Dufrane would have to run for reelection or someone, next member, to fill the unexpired term for two more years. So if we were to pass a resolution or a local law and local law we might permit, so if we get to that point, um, it wouldn't actually take effect until December of twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty?
Two.
Two. Thank you.
Like time flies.
Yeah. So we'll be providing you more information, asking you to consider that. And again, it's one of the recommendations in the study. Um, I, I know all of you said this because we've talked about it. Uh, we're serious about looking at the recommendations in this study and doing something. Local government, in my view, I've said it a hundred times, is too big, it's too costly. We're seeing, uh, and every service we provide is accountable for, right? We're, we're not doing things with too many people, but we have to look at any way that we can shrink the size of local government. And we may in the end, when we look at this, say it's not good, but certainly we're going to look at it and give it as due, um, consideration. Questions, thoughts?
We have to. I, I mean, in addition to the all-important goal of streamlining and simplifying government, at some point, there could be a way to overcome the obstacles to consolidation or dissolution. By looking at these things now, we're not only potentially simplifying things, saving money as well, but we're removing potential obstacles to a future consolidation, dissolution. It's one less complication if and when that actually comes. So right now, it was decided that there are obstacles that are not manageable because of current state laws and laws change. So I look at it, you know, if, if in five years, a law changes and suddenly we can revisit, this is one less complicated issue if we do end up going forward of how we're going to handle this. We were already handling it. So anyhow, we can make it simplified. I'm on board, so I'm glad we're going to continue looking.
Anything else on that? Good. Annual appointments of fire chiefs nominated by the volunteer fire department for twenty-twenty. We have the chief, Paul Brownout, first assistant chief, Patrick O'Brien, and first second chief, Thomas Miller. And jam motion. Mr. LeBeere?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We appreciate their service. Voucher warrants.
I vote that the voucher signed by Mayor Carrier, trustee Carville, myself be approved.
Seconded by Mr. Carville. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the, you had the Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., two thousand nineteen, for December, report, and the Permanent Fire Fighters and the Code, two thousand nineteen, for December. Communications correspondence, I have two. Received a letter from New York State Department of Health Inspector for our water treatment facilities, as always. I think sometimes we take for granted, we turn the water on, it's always there, it's always good. You know, we do numerous testing throughout the week, so, uh, it, we pass with flying colors. It's in excellent condition, uh, so the letter's available to you. We're proud of the work that they do there and we appreciate it, so I won't take that for granted. Also, I cite a proclamation, as you know, this Friday is Wear Red for Fall on Raiders' Day. And in discussion with the school districts and the organizers of this, we're actually designating officially by proclamation that fourth Friday in January every year as Wear Red for Fall on Raiders' Day. So I would encourage you and all of our current and former Raiders or anyone who wants to support the school district to wear red on Friday for that. So I have for communications, trustees, do you have anything? Opposing public comment? Saying none. I, we do need a executive session for elective negotiations pursuant to the table law, employee contracts, discussion, upcoming negotiations. And a good executive session.